All right, it is seven o'clock, so I guess we're going to get started. I'll call to order the regular meeting, the common council of the city of Platteville for Tuesday, October 27, 2015, and we'll start with Roll Call.
Barbara Stackhausen?
Yes.
Tom Knoll?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Ali Nichols?
Here.
Amy Seeboth-Wilson?
Here.
Mike Den?
Here.
And Barbara Doss?
Here.
First item is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion and action. A is council minutes from 9:29-15 and 10:12-15 our special meeting, and also 10:12-15 the regular meeting. Payment of bills. C is appointments to boards and commissions, and I have the following appointments this evening. A reappointment of Chuck Rundy to the airport commission, historic preservation commission, a partial term expiring 5/1/18, Paul Mares Canisch, Roundtree Gallery Board, also a partial term expiring 7/1/16, Laura Gorchon, and Water and Sewer Commission, a three-year term, Austin Polabitsky. Licenses, one-year and/or two-year operator licenses are in the packet. And E is a permit for a street closing for St. Augustine University Parish for a complex supper on April 13 of 16. Is that correct, 16? Yeah, I guess it would be.
Yeah, 2016.
Is there a motion? I move adoption of the consent calendar as published.
I'll second.
We'll vote.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seeboth-Wilson?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, and this evening we have two people who have asked to speak. The first is Zachary Zvoboda.
Hi.
All right, if you would, Zachary, please come up to the microphone, give your name and your address, and what you would like to comment on, and we do ask you, limit your comments to no more than five minutes.
Zachary Zvoboda, and I live at 605 Southwest Road, Platteville, and I think I was more nervous for my freshman speech class that had way more people in it than this, so. This weekend, I was filed with a disorderly conduct ticket for having overwhelming noise at 8:30 at night. Now, I come from a big city, from suburbs of Chicago, and we're used to having a time ordinance for when we can be quiet, when we can't be quiet. The city of Platteville doesn't have anything on a website, newspaper, or anything to find the times that we can and can't be quiet, and the police told us that it was any time of day, anybody can make a complaint. So if you're too loud at 3:00 PM, you can make a complaint, and I wish that that wasn't the case, and that there was a time where we did have to be quiet. The marching band plays outside of our house every day, and we don't, you know, nobody calls the cops on them. The football team practices right outside our house every day, and I have no problem with it. I have no problem with any of it. I just wish that, you know, we could unwind at 8:30 at night on a Saturday. So that is, that's what I have to say.
All right, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
The next item, or the next person who's asked to speak is Marilyn Godchak on move to amend.
Marilyn Godchak, 235 Virgin Avenue. I was before you, you know, a month ago, to tell you what we were all about here on move to amend, and I thought it only courteous, if you will, to update you on where we are with that. During the month of October, we had volunteers who went through the city of Platteville asking residents of the city to sign a petition, asking that a referendum question be put on the ballot in April of next year. So I'm here to just report that we have had a group of people going through the city for the whole month of October gathering signatures, and the target was something like 500 signatures, and that had to do with the number of people who voted in the last election. I am happy to report that we are done. We have gathered over 800 signatures on our petition, and we are turning them in tomorrow to Jan., who will then look them over and be sure that we're legal in all aspects. I just wanted you to know that the same process of going door-to-door and gathering these signatures has been taking place, not only here in Platteville, but they have done it in Darlington, in Belmont, and in Lancaster. So I think we are all finished in terms of gathering signatures. I just wanted to say that the reason that we elected to go door-to-door and gather signatures rather than coming to the council to ask the council to pass this is that we were in, we felt that this would be an education process. We would be talking to people and explaining what this is about, and so I think that we feel we have at least reached 800-plus people, and in explaining what this is all about, we have also been urging people to come in April and vote. So those of you who are up for election or reelection in April, you may have some people coming to vote. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you. The reports we have in our packet, library board, Nichols, I have nothing to add, airport commission, Doss?
Nothing to add.
Museum board, Stackhausen?
Nothing to add.
Parks, Forestry, and Recreation, Seeboth-Wilson?
Nothing to add.
Wendy Safrout, Seeboth-Wilson?
Nothing to add.
And commission on aging, Killian.
No addition.
Our next item is professional service agreement for job classification study. Karen?
Council members, you might remember this, we discussed it at our work session and at the last council meeting, but basically this is a compensation study that would assist us in putting a compensation system in place here at the city of Platteville. Once Acton rolled through and union contracts went away, we really didn't put a formal system in its place, and so the consultant contract that you see before engages with a consultant company that's very well versed in doing this activity and will be able to assist us in this endeavor.
Any questions, anyone?
After we finish this study, will we then be able to adjust wages and salaries? Or do we have to go further and have a market analysis?
So what we have proposed in this right now is the compensation, which would be the job analysis part of the compensation study. It would be an additional $11,000 to fund the market portion. In our budget for 2016 so far, we have about $4,000 to $5,000, so we will probably do some market research on some key positions, but we won't complete the full market portion.
So that we won't be adjusting on the basis of the study, unless we do the market analysis?
No, based on the results of the, based on the results of the job analysis and then the market study research that we do do, we will be recommending salary ranges-
Okay, that's what I was asking.
-and making adjustments based on those recommended ranges.
Per position? You said adjustments salary by position?
So positions would be assigned to a specific salary range, and depending on where they fall within that range, they may or may not be eligible for an adjustment. And again, I think as we discussed earlier, this is not something that will be accomplished in one year. We've set aside some money in 2016 to be able to make some market adjusts, or some adjustments in response to the compensation study, starting in July, but this will be a multi-year process.
Any other questions?
What's the length of the contract? I see that the term is the date the contract is signed until the service is completed. Do we expect this to be a 2015 and 2016 project, or?
I anticipate it will get started next month, and that, whoa, and that we would wrap up probably in the January, February timeframe.
Okay. Any other questions?
The, on page, second page, meritorious appeals, we would pay extra for those if they come?
In my discussion with the consultant, we actually will do the first vetting of appeals, but if there are additional appeals, they actually have agreed, as long as it's a reasonable number, that they will just handle them without additional fee.
Any other comments or questions? A motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion to approve-
Approve the study.
You both started at the same time.
Jinx.
I don't care. Ken, you want, or you can have it?
Go ahead, Ken, start your motion again, because you and Mike started at the same time.
I move to approve the study.
Second.
Which is of job classification.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seeboth-Wilson?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is renaming the Roundtree Branch Trail, the David Canni Roundtree Branch Trail, and we do have folks who have asked to speak in favor of this request, so I'm going to start with them, and the first person would be Jean Weber.
Evening.
Thanks again for all the help on the trail. David Canni envisioned and helped lead the development of the trail, expecting, hoping, and planning that someday it would be paved and lighted. Our MPO steering committee unanimously recommended naming the trail the David Canni Roundtree Branch Trail, not because David or his family gave a bunch of money to this project, but because he inspired the community to build the trail out of his love for Platteville. He inspired others to give back. He had dreams, crazy ideas some say, of doing good things for Platteville, that he constantly shared with all those around him as they came to his mind, and he brought the community together to make them happen. That, not money, is the reason we are making this renaming request. The entire collaborated community effort to pave and light the trail was the essence of David Canni. The entire community came together to make this happen. The entrance kiosk will list the name of the David Canni Roundtree Branch Trail, if approved, and the kiosk will share the story of how our community came together under David to build the trail, and the community he inspired to complete the paving and lighting of the trail. Obviously, I am asking you to vote in favor of making this renaming change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person is Kathy Kopp.
Kathy Kopp, 415 North Second. Want it known that I am here representing myself, not on behalf of the chamber, because I didn't realize that this was going to be an agenda item, and I didn't get it through our board, but personally, I can't think of a better tribute to David. I worked with him when he first started that trail. When we started Katie's Garden, David was there the night we turned the first shovel of dirt, and he did have a vision, and I can remember him always saying, "Well, I got a lot of crazy ideas." And some people just think that I'm plain crazy, and he says, "But once in a while, hopefully, something will stick." And I'm really glad that Karen is here tonight to hear this. David was an awesome guy, and he was very much hands-on, and he didn't expect anybody to do anything that he wasn't willing to do, and that when they put that trail through in the very next spring, we had that big flood, and a lot of the gravel got washed out. He was one of the very first ones in line to put it back, so very much am in support of the name change.
And the other person that has asked to speak is Christopher Wright.
Christopher Wright, 910 Seamer Street. I'll keep this brief. Behind every great project, there's a greater idea, and this is a great project, and David had the idea, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to honor that. Thank you.
We have had a number of emails, all in favor of renaming the trail, or someone has come to the meeting tonight and asked to register in favor. That person was Mary Penn. As far as other people who have emailed, and there are some very nice letters here of other council members who'd like to take a look at them later, Lauren Nakano, who's David's niece, Henry Markote, and I apologize if I mispronounce names, Tiffany Vance, Jan Mergan, Nathaniel Curry, Mary Rose Meyer, Mike Penn, Richard Gentry, Frank Steck, Catherine Burke, Thomas Nelson, and Julie Plemer, all have registered in favor of the renaming. So council discussion.
I have a question, looking at the map we got two weeks ago. The naming is for the portion from Chestnut Street to behind Menards?
Since the meeting-
I'm sorry.
If I could, since the meeting, we did speak with representatives from the DNR, and they will not allow renaming of the portion of the trail that is on the DNR land. Just they cannot rename after a person, so the location that we're now talking about would be from Mineral Street to Chestnut Street, so from near the dog park through to the roundabout.
Repeat that, please.
The whole thing, or though it's section?
The section.
The section would be from Chestnut Street to Mineral Street?
Oh, okay, just that portion.
Yes.
Now, the, as far as the university, university has a trail. What's the name of that trail? Does it have a different name?
I don't think I can answer that.
No, no.
I don't believe there's technically a name.
Yeah, the only map I've seen it on is the Platteville Trail Network, and it's just a continuation of the trail. I don't think it's individually labeled, I think it's UW Trail. I think it might be on the map.
Then on the east, it would come in connection with the Platteville Belmont Trail? That's what I have on the map here.
Yes.
Where, as far as naming?
The-
Name would be Platteville Belmont Trail?
That is still yet to be determined. We've spoken with DNR, and as Luke has just mentioned, you can't, any naming rights have to go before the Natural Resources Board, and they have not allowed it to be named for a person, so we're, there's a steering group for that trail, and they're in the process of looking at options for naming that portion of the trail. It may, it may end up being Platteville Belmont, Belmont Platteville, whatever, however we do that, it may have some other name. We don't know that just yet.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to say that I did have one other name to add for someone to register in favor, and that's Cindy Tang for renaming the trail. Other discussion?
I worked with David for a number of years. You couldn't have asked for a person that was so dedicated to working on the trail and the arboretum and Katie's Garden. If he was here now, he would probably have a little tear in his eye, but he would also have a great big smile because he would be thinking that this was really great, and one of his dreams became true. So I am fully in support of renaming the trail.
Is that a motion?
I'll motion it. Well, from what we can name, which is from-
Chestnut to Mineral.
Chestnut to Mineral Street.
Second. There we have a motion and a second. Is there any further council discussion? We'll vote.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seeboth-Wilson?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item is request for Platteville Housing Authority jurisdiction change, and I will note that we have two people who have registered in favor of the proposed change, and I'm not sure if we have someone. Jennifer, did you want to speak to this again this evening? Okay. The information is in our packet. Jennifer is here if we have questions, but the request is to increase the boundaries of the housing authority jurisdiction discussion. Yes?
If I may interject, if the council does wish to expand the current jurisdiction to the full Platteville 53818 zip code within Grant County, staff will draft a resolution to that effect and bring it forward to you. We just wanted to make sure that the council wanted to do this before drafting a resolution, authorizing it.
So it would require a resolution? Okay.
Yes.
Discussion?
I have discussion about, Attorney McGraw made some comments about this relative to expanding service into the township without the township contributing, and it appears the only support we give is in-kind support on an annual basis.
We do 1,800 for annual audit costs, I think, is that in-kind as well then?
No.
No, that's actual cash?
That's actual cash. The in-kind is the office space.
And is and has the Platteville Township Board been made aware of this request?
Not that I'm aware of.
Jennifer, could you come up just to the microphone, because I think that we need to have it recorded.
Jennifer Weber, 200 Preston Drive. And no, the township has not been made aware of it. It's, we thought as a courtesy we would if it goes through, but it's the same concept as, we, it's a personal landlord preference, so if they decide to rent to a Section 8 tenant, then that's just landlord preference, not really, you know, we don't go to the council or the board or anything like that. So as a courtesy, we were going to contact the township if it passes.
I had a question too while you were up there. Can you refresh me on, I guess the basic premise for this is that you would like to be able to give vouchers out to other apartments that are less expensive than the ones within town, the city, is that basically?
Yeah, yep.
Those outside of the city, they tend to be less expensive?
Yep, that's correct.
And you can still, if you are using the voucher, you can have your apartment within the city completely paid for by the voucher? It just takes more money to do that?
Right, yep.
Okay. So I had a couple of concerns with this. I know housing tends to be a little more expensive in the city, but I had two thoughts along the line of that, is one is we are building a new development on the north side of town right now, so I'm curious to know, how many units is that? Does anybody remember?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four? So that might have, make a dent in the housing market, I think. That was the intent of the city council when we helped pay for that development.
I think that's a, that's a Section 42, not a Section 8.
But you could still use, could you not use Section 8 vouchers? But even then, would it not change the pricing within the city of rental units potentially?
It would, it would change, I mean, it would give some more rental options to my Section 8 tenants, but it, and vouchers would be accepted there.
Oh, they would.
Yes, but I'm not real, I'm not real familiar with their development and, you know, their subsidy. They have other complexes in town that they subsidize, and that I have tenants in that subsidize as well, and they're one of our lower rents to deal with, for sure.
Okay, so that was my first thought, was just the pricing of housing in Platteville is an issue that sort of, I know the council's been actively working on for a couple of years now at least to try and produce more housing options, and it's an interest, a topic on our to-do list that we're continuing to work on. But then my second thought about this is, personally, I like the idea of people being closer to the city, especially if they have a family with kids, because then the kids can have more access to city resources and amenities. I know that the town border can be awfully close to the swimming pool, for example, so people still could theoretically walk, but if you're within the city, you have, you can walk and get around more instead of needing a car, and so there's advantages, I think, to our community, to think about it in the long term, that, you know, like, it might make sense today, but in five, 10 years, these decisions kind of add up, and they may not be the best thing if we can allow people to spread out further from the city core. It takes away from the quality of life for people within the city. So I, let me reframe that. I guess if you're living within the city, theoretically, even the new public bus is a resource that city, that families can use, and the further we let people move away from the city, there's less access to those types of resources that the city does provide. So that's a concern of mine when we talk about doing this, is that it just could spread people out further and make it harder to provide services.
And it would basically be family preference, just like any other living situation. It would just allow them to live outside city limits if they wanted to the country lifestyle, or if they wanted the cheaper rents, things like that, but I don't foresee it as an epidemic of everyone leaving town, and I only have 128 vouchers, so. I mean, most are settled in town because a lot of them are elderly or disabled, and they do need public transportation, things like that, but it would just allow people that option.
Could you, you said you have 128 vouchers. Does it, I mean, are your vouchers, and I'm sorry, I don't really know this, are your vouchers related to, I mean, do you have 128 vouchers because that's the amount of money you have, or do you have 128 vouchers regardless of how much it costs to rent?
Well, I have 128 total, and that's what, really far back when the housing authority was established and they went to HUD for that need, that's how many vouchers that they applied for and that they got. So that's my maximum that I could potentially, you know, lease families up, but I'm, I've not been at 128, but.
And is each voucher worth, I mean, is, are all the vouchers worth the same amount of money?
They're not. They're based on family composition. So there's a payment standard per family, so it's anywhere from zero to four bedrooms, and that, that amount of money is set by the fair market rents of Grant County, and we're, I'm allowed to go within 90 to 110%. I tend to go more towards the 110% above the payment standard to try to get them in with the college rates.
Other questions?
Do you, or are you planning to house people more in town or out of town if there's rental available?
It's strictly tenant preference. I give them a voucher and that, the payment standard based on their family composition, and from there, they have to find a unit that's affordable under the program. So that's where we come into, that's one of my biggest challenges is, or tenant challenges, I should say, is finding something that's within that payment standard, because, for instance, for a two-bedroom, 656 is the most that I would pay for rent and utilities, so if they have zero income, that's it. They have to find a two-bedroom for $656 with everything included, and that's not realistic, and three-bedroom would be 900. So, I mean, some have income, and a lot of them, like I said, are elderly and disabled, so they have that limited income, but some are working families, some are families with young ones at home. Sometimes they're just stuck within that amount, and that's it.
Other questions? Is there a motion? They ask us to expand the Section 8 housing voucher program outside of the city limits to include the 53818 zip code within Grant County.
I would move that we change the jurisdiction to include the 53818.
Next second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Do you want to consider asking the town to chip in? Basically, that's what, I think the municipalities, I'm looking at a map of zip codes. Basically, that's what, I think the municipalities, I'm looking at a map of zip codes. I can't tell from my map if Belmont's included. But the town, just the town. Okay.
That's Lafayette County.
There is no city.
I don't think it crosses, it can cross the county border. So you're saying the zip code, five-three-eight-one-eight?
Five-three-one-eight within Grant County.
Oh, with only, I missed that, sorry. Thank you.
It's Grant County only.
So what do you want, Amy? You want a part of eighteen hundred dollars and part of the five thousand dollars?
I'm posing it to the group that currently the city's basically covering the local administrative burden of the program. Do we want to ask the town to cover a portion of that if they're going to be benefiting from it? Benefiting, I know it's in quotations.
That's not in the motion.
That is not in the motion. That was what I was asking, because Barb brought up the point. It's a good point.
We have to handle the motion that we have on the floor right now. We have a motion and a second.
Well, you can have discussion, which is what I was doing.
Oh, yeah, the discussion you want.
And you mentioned the five thousand dollars. That was a one-time that my previous director, she went to the council. Yeah, but yeah, really, it's the office space that I have. And we, and that, I think, just stayed there because we used to be completely funded by the city. And that's salaries and retirement and benefits of, I think, three or four employees. So now, the one thing that remains with our support from the city, the main thing is the office space. And then we are under that umbrella of the audit once a year.
Thank you.
So you want to take a vote?
Yep, we're going to vote. We have a motion and a second and we'll vote.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seebolt Wilson?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
No.
Motion carries.
Next item is Contract fourteen fifteen, snow and ice removal.
Good evening. This is, this is an annual contract that we have for removal of snow and ice on sidewalks where the property owners do not shovel. We have an administrative fee of twenty dollars per parcel. We provided bid packages to five local firms. We received two bids. One from Four Seasons Landscaping, twenty dollars, or twenty cents per square foot, forty dollars minimum, snow only, and no changes to the bid specifications. Southwest Lawn Care bid eighteen point nine cents per square foot or thirty-eight seventy-five minimum for snow only. However, they wanted to make changes to the bid specifications. You can see those listed here. I have also included copies of the bid documents and the, and the specifications that we've sent out. Last year, the contract price was twenty cents a square foot with minimum forty dollars for the snow only. So the council has basically three different options. One would be to reject Southwest Lawn Care's bid as unresponsive and award to Four Seasons. And if you wish to direct staff to change bid specifications for future years, you may do so. The other would be to reject, another would be to reject both bids and direct staff to rebid the contract. Last time, we asked for consensus and the consensus was no for rebidding. If we, if you decide to rebid, then this would not be awarded until December. Number three was waiving informalities and accepting the Southwest Lawn Care bid with the modifications. And we had a discussion last time with the city attorney regarding, regarding this portion at this point. Staff recommends option one. However, if, if you want to discuss changing the bid conditions, you know, we can look at doing it for next year. Or if you need, if you believe that it's appropriate to change the specifications now, then staff believes option two is the appropriate solution.
Discussion?
We had lengthy discussion on this last time, so I'm not going to draw this out for you at all. The only thing I will say is, when we have an ordinance, you need to follow it. And this contract doesn't follow the ordinance that we have. So, but the only way you can do it, if you do not want to rebid it, is you have to take the Four Seasons one, unfortunately, because you can't do the one for Southwest with all those changes in it. Because those changes need to be presented to everyone if we're going to have it. So we don't have a lot of options there.
Mike, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you work for Four Seasons?
I work for them. I'm a summer contractor. I don't do anything in the wintertime.
I would think that would comply as a conflict of interest.
No, actually not, because I don't work for them. I'm a contracted summer employee.
Okay, well, my point would be, it's a conflict of interest, so I'd be more comfortable if you didn't participate in this discussion.
Well, that's fine, but I'm going to do it anyway. Anyway, so what we need, like Howard has a good point, that we need to rework it for next year. So that's what I have to say.
I have a question for Howard. The title is Contract fourteen through fifteen, snow removal or ice removal. Is that supposed to be fifteen through sixteen?
That, that's just a contract number that we use internally. It, it does not connotate the year or the, or the winter season.
Okay, that's all. I was just wondering.
Didn't mean to confuse you.
I do have a question. Last year, it was twenty cents per square foot with a minimum of forty for snow only and twenty-five cents per square foot with a minimum of fifty dollars for ice and packed snow. So this year, I see both are bid for snow only. Does that mean we're not going to remove ice and packed snow? Just a question.
They, I'm sorry, the, in the, in the actual bid tabulation, there, there is bids for both snow only and the ice and packed snow. Four Seasons bid exactly the same as last year. Twenty cents per square foot, forty dollars minimum for, for snow. Twenty-five cents per square foot, fifty dollar minimum for ice or packed snow. Southwest Lawn Care bid a reduced rate for, for both snow only and ice and packed snow. For purposes of the discussion, I, I was only looking at the snow. However, the, if you, if you are awarding this contract, then yes, you would need to award for both the snow version, snow and the ice and packed snow portion.
So you would just accept the bid of...
Accept the bid, yes.
Okay, I will. I, I've, I wasn't here for the initial discussion, but I do have some sympathy or empathy for what Mike has said relative to, our ordinance is pretty clear. It says you have to begin snow removal on your own sidewalk within thirty-six hours. Yet in this particular bid package, that's not the case. I believe we need to rework the RFP for next year. And at this point, I'll make a motion to accept Four Seasons landscaping bid for this year.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Which one is accepted?
Four Seasons.
Four Seasons, okay.
Ain't no discussion, we'll vote.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seebolt Wilson?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is under information and a discussion. We have twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen city assessing proposals. There is information in your packet that the RFP went out. However, I do have a note from Dwayne Borgen, Director of Administration, that we did not receive any assessing proposals by the two P.M. deadline on Monday, October twenty-sixth. And after conferring with city attorney and city manager, staff recommendation is to extend the bid deadline.
Do you need a voter nomination for that, or?
I have a question.
Okay, sure.
My question is, as far as the present assessors, who is going to give us an assessment of the assessors as far as their work performance?
I didn't hear Counselor Killian's question.
My question is, who is going to give us an assessment of the assessor's work performance? So we know whether or not we want to keep them or how they should be considered if we get some other bids in.
I'll take a stab. I'm not sure that there is a formal assessment, assess, assessment of the assessor.
I'm just saying, evaluation, evaluation of the work that they're doing.
You know, assessors work off of kind of a standard way that they proceed with their business. And to some degree, they're expected to be somewhat removed from us so that they're fair and impartial in the work that they're doing. So our RFP outlines some, several criteria with which we would evaluate the capabilities of the assessment firm. But it doesn't necessarily evaluate the current job performance of the current assessing organization.
I would have a question relative, to me, one way that you might determine is if you have more complaints, more people going to the Board of...
Board of Review?
Review than you had in previous years. It would seem to me like if I felt my assessment was drastically in error compared to somebody else's, we would see more people going to the Board of Review. I don't know.
That's a pretty good gauge, because what other gauge do you have? Either complaint or non-complaint.
Right.
The, the assessor does meet with anybody that does have a problem with their assessment. So as a former Board of Review, in most cases, that has been eliminated by the assessor working with those people that have complaints. So the present assessor seems to be doing a good job. Otherwise, there would be a lot more coming to the Board of Review, as you said. So I, I'm in favor of resubmitting.
So we'll just continue with the, the RFP deadline. The next item is library block development.
Good evening again. I'm going to do my best to do a reboot of this project and just to kind of bring everybody back up to speed because it's been a while since it's been discussed publicly. And Jesse and I are going to tag team on this. So just to start things off, I always like to put things in context of kind of the greater vision for the community. And if you read directly from our downtown revitalization plan that was done in two thousand and eleven, you'll see this kind of following vision. Downtown Platteville is a vibrant place and the cultural heart and identity of the community. A diverse business mix is thriving and profiting. Arrival to the downtown district is distinctive and appealing and parking is easy to find. Visitors discover reasons to linger and explore and more people choose to live downtown. And, and so with respect to the library block or in the downtown plan in general, you'll hear the word gateway being used. And I think the library block was one of the areas that was called out as being a gateway to the downtown area. It's, it's a really highly visible location at one end of downtown and then also for the UWP area. I'm not going to go through all of the detailed history, but I wanted to have it in the presentation in case anyone wanted to go back and refer to it. A lot of this was compiled by my predecessor. But I think the greater point is just that this is not something that's just popped out of the blue. It's been worked on for a long time. The idea of expanding the library, discussion around that started back in two thousand and nine. And in two thousand and eleven, there was the downtown revitalization plan that called out this parcel in particular as being a potential area for redevelopment. And then in two thousand and thirteen, we start to look specifically and begin conversations with developer Troy Huckstra, who is actually intending to be here tonight. I, I think he's still en route and hopefully will join us in progress. So just a reminder of what the redevelopment proposal is. This part hasn't changed since the last time it was talked about publicly. This is a privately led, but a public-private partnership to look at this particular block. The block's bordered by Main Street, Chestnut, Elm Street and Pine Street. It would involve demolition of six existing buildings and the construction of two larger buildings, one of which would be a twenty-two thousand square foot commercial space that would house our public library and then a seventy-two room Holiday Inn Express, which would be about forty-three thousand square feet. Our current library site would be renovated into the Community Health Partners Clinic, a home for them, so that their current location could be part of the redevelopment. That's pending an agreement with the clinic. And the project would also include fifty-five underground and forty-two surface parking spots. The parking lot that's used by the Lutheran Church is not included as part of the redevelopment proposal. And these were a couple of images that were show, were showed last spring with respect to what the library portion of that project might look, look like. And this is sort of looking, I think, from the Livingston Bank location, looking forward across Kitty Corner. And then this would be the side of the building as it runs along Main Street. And with that, I'm going to let Jesse share some specifics about the library itself.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to explain a little bit about how we came up with, what we have come up with. First of all, I would say that the architects from Plunkett and Racech have done an excellent job of meeting with us, listening to us, working through, solving the needs of the future of the Platteville Public Library. So we did form a building committee that consists of approximately ten community members, a real wide variety of experts in different fields, representatives from the university, educators, library staff. Back in two thousand and nine, the library did conduct a really thorough look at what a future library would need. We did what was called a library program. And an expert came through and said, you need this much square footage, you need this much shelving, and really spelled it out for us. So that thankfully made our job a lot easier. So then, in two thousand and fourteen, when we realized this was going to become a reality, that's when we really started to do our homework and determine what the library of the future would be. So as you can see, I don't really feel like I need to read all of this for you, but it just kind of gives you a taste. Any of you are welcome to stop in my office. We do have the floor plans there and you're welcome to take a look at them at any time. Here's kind of a fun view. This would be looking in from the corner of, if you were looking from Livingston Bank, looking in, let's just say. And then this would be looking onto Chestnut Street. Did I go too fast? Was that okay? The second floor consists of a lot of our children's programming space, a lot of children's collections. But also, we do have a community meeting room that would accommodate one hundred, study rooms, a library board and foundation meeting room, and administrative offices. And this would be looking up, you'd be coming up the stairs there, looking out across the library. A lot of fun colors incorporated to really make it an inviting arena for children and families. And this would be looking towards the stairwell.
All right, back to me. So with respect to the specifics of the agreement that is before you tonight, in terms of development financing, as I said, this is a public-private partnership. And you can see here that partner equity, the firm is actually called Miners Development LLC. They are putting in three million, six hundred thousand dollars into the project. We also have new market tax credits that the developer has secured that are contributing to the project in the amount of three million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand. The city would have a TIF contribution of two million dollars and there would be a bank loan that the developer is responsible for paying, of course, in, in terms of... in, in terms of $6,818,000 for a total project investment of over $16 million. The city would also contribute a current library site and building, which is conservatively valued at, that should say actually $575,000. So in terms of the development financing, it's important to note that a city contribution to a redevelopment project of this size is not unusual. Development assistance is often required specific, particularly in redevelopment because of the additional costs associated with site acquisition, demolition, and cleanup, and then in this case, also underground parking. The city also engaged Ellers Incorporated. They're an independent financial advisor that works specifically with the municipalities to do a pro forma review on our behalf to make sure that the, the public assistance was warranted and we concluded that it was. For the city's $2 million TIF investment, that would be recaptured through increased taxes generated by the project. The development agreement includes guaranteed tax increments, meaning that the developer is guaranteed to pay a minimum amount of taxes regardless of the assessed value of the property. And the total value of those guaranteed tax increments is $2.685 million. That would be 20 payments from the period 2017 through 2036. And the larger dollar value, of course, to being able to account for the interest in, in money that accrues over time. The remaining $350,000 of a total obligation of $3 million would be captured through district or donor district TIF revenue. The development proposal also includes a lease agreement. So basically, the commercial facility, space for the new library is constructed. The city would have a seven to eight-year lease, and I'm going to talk about why that number's a little flexible. And then it's the developer's intent to gift the library at the end of that period. The reason why the lease is required is because new market tax credits can only be used for private development and the new market tax credits require a market rate lease during the seven-year life of the tax, of the tax credits. So the total expected city payment over the course of the seven years would be 1.5 million. As I noted, it's a little flexible there, seven to eight million, and that's because once the tax credit, new market tax credit period closes, there will probably be a few months that it will take to complete the paperwork to completely end the, the obligation and to make it available for the future gifting. And I should note that we have with us Steve Roy, who's been our attorney working on this project. And he is in a much better position to answer detailed questions with respect to some of these aspects of the financing. The lease payments would be paid through a combination of potential tax increment from the project. That could come from the project itself, district or donor district TIF revenue, and general tax revenue. And I would note that during the first few years of the lease, it's most likely to be general tax revenue that would cover the lease payments. So all developments have some risk involved and, and this development agreement is no exception. There are two notable risks with respect to this agreement. One is that there's no guarantee that the library will be gifted to the city at the end of seven years. If you look in the agreement, the actual language is that the developer intends to do it. And again, because of the requirements with respect to the new market tax credits and the financing, we cannot put mandatory gifting language in the agreement. I would note, however, that there are strong financial incentives for the owners to gift the library and that the city retains the right to continue leasing and the right of first refusal to purchase in the event that the library would not be gifted. The other risk is bankruptcy. And I would note with respect to that, if for some reason the, the project became insolvent, that we did do the, we did have the pro forma review done by Ellers in addition to extensive reviews by the folks that are handling the new market tax credits and the bank lenders. So I think this project has undergone a lot of scrutiny. The developer and maybe Steve can even talk to that a little bit in more detail. The bank would have the first lien on the library property if for some chance it did go into bankruptcy. And the investors have given us personal guarantees to the city that should, were that to occur, that they would cover the guaranteed tax payments that are already outlined in the agreement. With respect to the project timeline, these numbers are somewhat flexible, but this is what the developer has shared with us. Sort of the November to January timeframe, they're intending to have their approvals completed, the hazardous materials abated, and the existing buildings demolished. And then the construction period would likely be February of next year through November for both the hotel and the library. After that's completed, they would do the clinic remodel. And then the clinic would return to, to that site. Again, that's pending an agreement with the clinic. In terms of next steps for you as an elected body, we believe this will come back to you for final council approval and at your November 10th meeting. We do expect that there will probably be some changes, tweaks to this agreement during the interim period. So expect that you may see that. I would note that on our website, or soon to be on our website, the public will be able to see the agreement. And we do, a part of the agreement is an attachment that is the actual building plan itself. We do have that printed out and available for viewing in the city manager's office. We'll also be looking at a resolution for a bond sale, authorizing the city to go forward with a bond sale, most likely at our November 10th meeting as well, so that we could line up our financing for the $2 million contribution. We would still need to finalize a lease agreement. And then there would still be planning commission approvals that would be required for the project. With that, I can take any simple questions. Otherwise, Steve is here as well to answer any questions you may have. And Jesse.
Questions, anyone? I know the developer is on his way and said he thought he would be here by 8:05 or 8:10. So I don't know if we want to adjourn for a few minutes and wait to see if he'd like to make any statements. That might be, since he's driving down from Minneapolis, that might be a nice thing to do.
Can I make a note real quick?
Sure.
I just want to say this for everybody's sake, that we don't have questions because we've been meeting a ton and talking about this and we've had a lot of questions and a lot of answers already. So I just hope that our silence on the questions doesn't sound like we don't care. It's because we've already answered them extensively. I just wanted to point that out.
Really, and the purpose of the information tonight is for the public to get all the facts. And that gives you a couple of weeks before our next meeting. So if you have questions, please feel free to contact the city manager or any one of the council members and we'll be happy to sit down and talk with you. Or Jesse also, although Jesse has been in a somewhat difficult position because she is the director of the library and she's done a really excellent job, so she's gone board. But she gets a lot of questions about the financing portion of it, the developer's agreement, and obviously it's the council's responsibility to look at the developer's agreement and approve or disapprove it.
I, I do have something I want to say, and that is, this has, this is an incredibly complex project. New market tax credits are, that's a federal program. And the whole application process, award process has, has complexities that I, I think are somewhat, I don't know.
Mind-boggling?
Mind-boggling is the only way I can say it. And I really commend the council for the patience that we've had as we've worked through the many, many, many hours of learning about these things. Stephen Roy has been incredibly helpful as we've worked through negotiating back and forth. If you, if you saw the financing package, you know that it's not just Mike and I talking. It's four different groups.
Right.
With all these attorneys that are talking to each other.
And state laws are different.
Gets very, very complex.
State laws are different from federal laws.
And Karen kind of jumped into the middle of this. And I really commend her for the quick learning that she's, you know, because that, that's another thing that we've learned in this. The developer is a Minnesota person. Karen's a Minnesota person. Actually, new market tax credits work different in Minnesota than they do in Wisconsin. And so there's a whole learning curve about, even though they're a federal program and one would have reason to believe that they're the same, they are. That's all.
State and fed laws are different for the same tax credit.
Right. Very, very interesting. I would also like to note that, thank you for the presentation. I would also like to note that there are three individuals who would like to register in favor of the developer's agreement, the library block project, anyway. Carol Ann Hood, Hap Dawes, Betsy Ralph Tollison, and we have one person who has asked to speak, and that's Jack Ludkey. Do you like to speak in favor, it says?
Ludkey, I'm the executive director for the Main Street program. And I don't want to so much speak in favor of the project as I want to begin by thanking the council for their due diligence. And as was stated here, a very difficult project. Anytime you take on not only new market tax credits in the process, and the developer has just walked in so he can echo some of these concerns, but you also take on a different animal in development when you are trying to put it into a downtown area rather than a green space that has unlimited space and size to deal with some of the issues that come up, like a parking issue and getting enough square footage in your development that you can actually make it pay and make a developer interested in putting up a hotel in an area that is prime for location but doesn't have the space other than the, the block that was chosen. So I would like to thank the council, first of all, for that effort in, in working through this. I'm not sure what's happening here, but that's okay. And also to thank the developer. This project, when it started, I didn't have gray hair. I have it now. So it's been a long process. In one of the first meetings I attended, I remember that a developer and a contractor who are no longer involved and haven't been involved in the project for a number of years said that this is going to be an unusually difficult process to go through. There are too many moving parts and he said, "You're going to have to exercise a lot of patience because one day it's going to look good and the next day it's going to look terrible." And I would say that from a perspective of the Main Street program and the merchants along Main Street, they are all salivating, waiting for this project to go forward. Whether you're talking about the cleaners across the street or you're talking about the restaurant owners, they are looking forward to having a density of population from outside the community that's within walking distance of their businesses. And it is a, it is a bellwether to other developers as you start looking at redeveloping the Ford Motor Company site, that developers around the country that will get RFPs for that will realize that Platteville's open for doing business. And it doesn't always come down to, take my hands off of the mic. It always doesn't come down to necessarily incentives that they may or may not be looking for, but what is a community really looking forward to in terms of developing and the future of the community? And then again, with this project, we have the unique opportunity of getting a library built, which was discussed with the council probably two years before this project really got underway and the, and the consideration for it. And it's not often that a community can get the kind of facility that they're going to get at the price they're going to get it. And everybody would like it to be free, but we all know there's nothing free in this world. And I think for the future of the community and the families that are in Platteville, they can be very thankful that the developer stuck in with this project for as long as he has. He doesn't have gray hair, as you will see later, but I do know the angst that he's gone through trying to put this project together. And he didn't walk away. And so for that, I would like to thank Troy and his company for sticking this out. Thank you.
We did have one other person register in favor of the library development project, Cindy Tang. Troy?
Gray hair, but I'm just losing my hair. So there's a difference. So as I was speeding here, I was thinking, what do I say? And to summarize the global view, it's been two and a half years. To summarize the narrow view, it's been two and a half years and a dead skunk has about 20 minutes ago. So my car does not smell good right now. It'll be a fun drive home. I think it was about two and a half years ago that I rolled into town and we had a meeting. And I think if we all knew how hard this was going to be, you might have told me to keep going. But here we are. We've got funding for the program, which is a 72-unit Holiday Inn Express. We've got a new library on the books to be built. 22,777 square feet, if I'm correct. And we've got a new clinic. So the challenge before us is can we cross a couple of final hurdles, which are hopefully minimal, and that is, of course, some final negotiations between the bank and the new market tax credit people. That's got nothing to do with any of us and I don't foresee that being a major issue. I guess I could get into all kinds of detail on that, but you don't want to hear about that today. So from, from where I'm sitting, you know, this thing should be closing in 30 days or less, barring a bolt of lightning. Again, our equity is raised, this thing started out as a $2 million investment for us. It then got raised to a $3 million investment to us. And about two and a half weeks ago, it got raised to a $3.6 million investment for us. And the whole time, the amount of the debt was getting reduced, reduced, reduced. That was not due to project costs. So, you know, the good news of that is it makes the project that much more financially viable, takes that much more pressure off of it. The bad news, of course, is the investors got to pass the hat time and time again, which we've done. So from the city's perspective, you know, what's in it for you? What's in it for the citizens of Platteville? I think at the end of the day, you know, the, the city, I always say city. The city comes down to people. The, the people sitting here, Joe and, and others, and I think even Karen in your short time, you've probably had your fill of this thing too already. But certainly the city council, you've put your time in on this as well. I remember standing at, what was it, the Augsburg Football Field sometime last summer when we thought this thing was dead and we had some emergency Saturday conference call slash meeting to get the train back on the tracks. And that was a moment of truth, otherwise we wouldn't be here today. So, so we've all got our time in on this and I, I think that the public should be aware of those kinds of things because they may not be aware of the time that's been invested here on your part, my part, all of our parts. So from the, from the citizen's perspective, you're going to read about numbers, those watching by camera or whatever. You're going to read about the city investing $2 million and paying a lease and, and don't let those numbers cloud the facts. Any dollar that the city is putting forward for this project is going to be paid back to the city. So the net effect of this, and this is where I'll, I'll differ with Jack a little bit. He said nothing is free. In this case, it, it just might well be. At the end of the day, the net expense to the general public and the citizens of this community is going to be zero relative to the cost of this library. So to, to ensure that and to validate that, I think the citizens and the city can look at the financial investment that we've made. You know, kind of put our money where our mouth is. You've done the same. We've got all kinds of gear. And then lastly, it's our intent and our financial need to give this library back to the city. And that's at the end of the seven years of the repayment of the new market tax credits. So if we could do it any other way, I'm pretty sure by now we would have discovered a way to do that, and we would be doing that. But because we want these dollars through these new market tax credits, we have to adhere to this seven-year plan. But it's certainly our intent and our goal and our mandate to give this library back to the citizens and to the city at the end of seven years, and we'll move on with our hotel and make sure that it's well-maintained and well-run and pays its taxes on time. So if there's any questions for me, from anyone, I'm here to answer those or whatever the case may be.
I don't see any questions from the council members. I'm not sure, you know, people in the audience, some of you have seen some of this information before, but not everyone, so it may be a little premature, but we're available, you're available for questions in the next couple of weeks.
I'm pretty easy to find.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Making the long drive.
Yes. Actually, I think I made it twice, but that's okay.
Yeah. Oh, I feel sad you went all the way down here to make a 10-minute, whatever, presentation.
For those who don't know, I was on my way here, and I got a kind of emergency phone call that I was maybe not supposed to be here because some i's were maybe not dotted or t's crossed, which turned out to be untrue. So I was about an hour and a half away, turned around, got the call to turn around again when I was in Rochester, Minnesota, turned around, came all the way back. So what is normally a five-and-a-half-hour drive for me has been the better part of about eight, so.
And that phone call did not come from city?
Absolutely not.
Thank you.
No, it came from unrelated parties, so I won't hang him out to dry publicly as much as I'd love to do that right now, so.
All right.
And Jack, we're still going to put that cell tower on top of that building.
Any other comments from any council members?
No, I would just like to say thank you to Karen and the city staff for doing the FAQs. And I'm assuming, Karen, that that would be on the website, too. And, yeah, and Troy, you weren't here when I said this was an incredibly mind-boggling process.
Lots of arrows on the graph.
Yep. So.
All right. Thank you.
If the public, no, it's not for Troy, it's a question for you, I mean, more than anything. A process question. If the public does have questions about this, what's the best way for them to ask questions if they want to between now and November 10? You said they can talk to you directly.
You know, our name and telephone contact numbers are all, I think, on the web. If they're not, we'll double-check and make sure they are, so I'm in the phone book anyway.
And we have a great city manager. That's who I would direct them to.
We have a city manager that would love to take phone calls, and we also have email addresses, so, yeah, if you have questions, please contact us and let us know what they are.
It'd be great if a lot of those questions came in before November 10, so we had time to answer them.
It would be great.
Yeah, and people are welcome to come on November 10 and speak if they want to, but it's really nice if they come in before the meeting.
Yep. If you have questions, it's really helpful to know your questions before the night of the meeting, so we can get you for sure answers, so.
Last comment I might.
Yes, go ahead.
It's rare that I give any attorneys public praise or even private praise.
But in this case, I think we got to give Mr. Roy a little credibility here. If everybody knew the amount of time he's invested in this thing, I mean, the number of phone calls that he's had with all these different attorneys on Saturdays, Sundays, emails that I see at midnight, he's earned his stripes on this deal as much as any of us. So I just want to recognize him and make you all aware of the effort he's put into this.
Stephen, do you want to say anything? You'd have to come to the microphone. But Stephen Roy has been representing the city in all these negotiations, and I would have to say he has done an incredible job for us.
Extremely incredible.
I have learned by watching a little bit, is you don't touch this thing, apparently. And Troy, thank you for the kind words, as well as the other council members. You can leave your briefcase here. We can take you. I will take responsibility. I'm the one who called Troy while he was in Rochester and told him to come back. So if there's anyone to blame for that, it's me. Just a couple of points that they've been commented on already, but more specifically, what your goal is going to be in the next 30 days is to take in the public input, answer the questions as you just illustrated, and then hopefully pass a final document on the 10th. Is that when your meeting next took? And so then, that, the agreement that's going to be or is on the website already, will be tweaked a little bit as time goes on here in the next two weeks. There were some changes as of 11 o'clock this morning. I think we eliminated 13 commas and a couple of colons and some exclamation points. So that kind of process will still go on for a little bit, and then there will be a final agreement for you to pass on the 10th. Contemporaneously with that is Troy's counsel, and Troy will be putting together an initial draft of the lease that, because we're going to be leasing the 22,000-foot commercial space from them, and that will also be completed prior to the closing. And as someone pointed out, they're trying to shoot for December 1st for the closing, where all the parties get together and sit down and hopefully sign all the documents. As far as thank you goes, your staff has been just incredible to work with. Joe and Dwayne have just especially got thrown into the wolves when you had the switch over from having an administrator to no administrator for a while, and then Karen comes in and grasps the obvious right away, that this is a headache, and it's incredible. She helped wrap your arms around it. She did an excellent job. For the public to know is, we've had two special meetings on the weekends? One, two?
One, two. I think we've had at least two special meetings, yeah.
Your council members have religiously been called to orders and have responded appropriately and have met whenever they were required to meet. There've been, as Troy commented, there've been several crises, one of those crises, he was on a football field with his, I think, children, weren't you? And we were all huddled down in the administrator's office trying to fax documents to Wida. So, but in any case, the point of the matter is, the council members have been very agree with their time and have been extremely cooperative in trying to get this agreement done so that they could move forward with it. It's difficult to build a $16 million project under any circumstances. It's next to impossible to build such a thing when you involve the federal government, the state of Wisconsin, and a couple of nonprofits, and you try to get all those people together on the same page. But other than that, those are my comments, and if anyone has any specific questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Could you comment on the word, use of the word "commercial"?
I can, I can.
The public may have a question about that word.
Sure. The, this project, where it's located, is in a commercially-zoned area. The buildings which are being built on the, on the project, or by the project, on the property, are all commercial-related. We are merely leasing the property, the 22,000-foot square foot facility. It could have been, if there had been a need or someone was willing to do so, it could have been an apartment, an apartment building, it could have been a department store, it could have been a bank. In this particular case, we're going to lease it as our library facility, but initially is a commercial facility. So that's why you'll see those terms in the developer's agreement, is because we're not owning the commercial facility, the developer's going to own it. Did that get to your question, Ken?
Thank you, yes. For the public, too.
And certainly, we're going to be happy to try to answer that in the future.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much for all the late nights.
All right. If no one else has anything else to say, I would entertain them, oh, I did, no, I did the three people who registered in favor, right? All right. So then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seaboth Wilson?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.